... on recovering energy, natural resources, and economic benefit for waste for Los Angeles. We have three items on today's agenda. We have a quorum present. Item number one, please.
Item number one.
Quorum consists of Mr. Parks and Ms. Perry.
Item number one is a city attorney report and draft ordinance relative to amending Article Six, Chapter One, Division Ten of the Los Angeles Administrative Code to establish an environmentally preferable purchasing policy.
Good afternoon, Deputy City Attorney Bill Casella.
Gerald St. Ange, Department of General Services.
Did you have anything to add, or you're just here? Okay. Well, that's easy. If we have, we do have one public speaker first. Jane Paul, please. If you guys could make a hole there. There you go.
I'll sit next to you. Good afternoon. My name's Jane Paul. I'm here to represent the Green L.A. Coalition. The Green L.A. Coalition is comprised of more than 100 organizations from environmental, environmental justice, economic justice, and public health arenas. We heartily support the environmentally preferable purchasing ordinance, and we urge this committee to move the ordinance forward. We're thrilled with the leadership on environmental issues from Renew L.A. as we face critical mass in landfills, climate change ramifications, depletion of natural resources, and powerful issues of community health. We believe that the environmentally preferable purchasing ordinance and program should have regular reports on progress from departments, should have input from nongovernmental experts, and we would hope it would be a living document. But in lieu of that, we hope to see that there are continued meetings and education for the EPP Task Force. We would hope for a continued focus on tight standards for toxics in products and for incorporation of a commitment to locally sourced products. We encourage implementation to educate employees on products, on process, and on full life cycle. Finally, we believe in the tremendous potential, economic development, and employment opportunities that can take place if industry connected to these products can be encouraged to cite here in L.A. And once again, we thank you for your work.
Thank you very much, Ms. Paul. GSD, do you have any comments on the suggestions they made about the task force continuing, reports, et cetera?
Not at all. Not at all. We have, we do have our task force. We've met to put the ordinance together, and we'll continue to meet.
And you can take some of the recommendations she made about reports back and.
Not a problem.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Park, anything?
No.
Ms. Perry?
At least they got it done.
Yeah, yeah, we got it done. Okay, with that, we have a couple wording changes to add. So we can, we'll give this to the clerk. That Article Six, Section 10.32, Subsection B, Subsection Two be amended to add the word recyclability to, in addition to recycled content. That Section Six, excuse me, Article Six, Section 10.32, Subsection B, Subsection Three be amended to add the word recyclability in addition to recycled content. And that Section Six, Article Six, Section 10.32, Four, Subsection A, Subsection Fifteen be amended to add the word recyclable in addition to remanufactured or recyclable. With that, the committee will then move to council with a recommendation for approval. And I also want to thank personally, obviously, GSD, John Trevgoda, and Gerald St. Ange, Bureau of Sanitation, Karen Coca, Karen Higgins, and EAD staff, George Pavey and, Pava and Karen Christie for all their work. And again, this is during the city attorney, Bill, for just really helping move this along. It was a tough road to home. We appreciate all the work you did. I know there's a lot of time put into it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two.
Item number two is a verbal report from the Bureau of Sanitation on the Post Source Separated Municipal Solid Waste Alternative Technologies Request for Proposal.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Raina Pereira with the Bureau of Sanitation.
Good afternoon, Miguel Zermeino with the Bureau of Sanitation as well.
This report is to give you an update on the status of the evaluation process for alternative technology and the Board of Public Works' action on June 1st, 2009. The Bureau of Sanitation collects green material, recyclables, and refuse material from over 740,000 residents. While the material from the green and blue bin is recycled, the material from the black bin, approximately 3,600 tons per day, is disposed off in landfills. To reduce the reliance on landfills and harness the energy from trash, a mayor directed the Bureau of Sanitation to establish an alternative technology facility capable of processing black bin waste. In addition, city council's adopted Renew L.A. plan calls for the establishment of seven conversion technology facilities, one in each of the six waste sheds and one in the local region. In February 2007, the Bureau released a request for proposals seeking development partners for both a proven commercial technology capable of processing between 200 and 1,000 tons per day, and an emerging facility capable of processing less than 200 tons per day. One very important piece of the RFP was that the technology, whether commercial or emerging, has to process municipal solid waste similar to the waste generated in the city of Los Angeles. On August 22nd, 2007, the city received 13 proposals. Proposals came from across the United States and from abroad, including Canada, Germany, Israel, Japan, and Spain. Proposed technologies included mechanical, biological, thermal technologies employing automated and manual sorting, and aerobic digestion, composting, advanced thermal recycling, which is second generation of complete combustion technology, gasification, pyrolysis, and plasma art gasification. Of the 13 proposals, four companies failed to submit their good faith effort documentation and therefore were deemed non-responsive and were not evaluated. These companies are Carbon Sequestration, Zeometallurgical Processors, Covanta Energy, Rainbow Disposal. Of the remaining nine companies, six were considered for evaluation under proven commercial facilities, and two were considered under emerging technology. The six companies were Interstate Waste Technologies, known as IWT, Green Conversion Systems, formerly WRSI, Community Recycling, Wheelabrader Technologies, California Renewable Technologies, also known as CART, and Ubassa Keppel Seagulls. Of the emerging technologies, three companies submitted, and they were Wheelabrader Technologies, Plasko Energy Group, and CART. Wheelabrader was not evaluated under emerging technologies since the proposal was incomplete and contingent on the city awarding Wheelabrader a contract under the commercial technology. I'd now like to turn it over to Miguel, who'll talk to you some more about the shortlisting of these proposals.
What do you know about it?
Thank you, thank you, Raina. The evaluation panel shortlisted the proposals. Additional three companies were not recommended for further evaluation under the RFP. That includes two commercial and one emerging. The three companies that will not further be evaluated are Community Recycling under commercial, Interstate Waste Technologies, IWT, under commercial, and Plasko Energy Group under emerging. In the case of Community Recycling, it is important to note that Community Recycling is a vendor that the city is currently under contract for the processing of green material as well as food waste from commercial and residential pilot program. Community's proposals, missing a piece of the proposal, is their anaerobic digesters that process the MSW. Since this has been to be commercial, proven, and operational, we cannot recommend this proposal, this vendor. In the case of Interstate Waste Technologies, IWT, IWT proposed treatment of MSW through pyrolysis gasification technology, a thermal process, without any required pre-processing. Through preliminary evaluation, the proposal did not provide adequate proof of operational, operating solely on MSW similar to that stated in the RFP. Since the reference facility visited by the city does not operate on MSW alone, and claimed syngas produced could not be verified, the proposal is not recommended for further evaluation as well. Under the case of emerging technologies, Plasko, Plasko Group is a plasma gas gasification process, and that, this technology is to, is under the emerging technologies category. Prior to the city's site visit, the vendor had not demonstrated to process more than 1,000 tons, tons or tons in a 12-month period as required in the RFP. When operational, the facility has processed post recycle residential MSW at times supplemented with rejected plastic material from curbside recycling program that is typically landfill in Ottawa, Canada. There has been insufficient demonstrations of operating the reference facility entirely to continue with further evaluation at this time. Therefore, this proposal is not recommended for further evaluation. The Bureau of Sanitation requires additional information to complete its evaluation on the commercial and emerging shortlisted proposals received for the RFP. The Bureau will request additional information from the, from the proposals, the four remaining proposals. And this includes their financial options to develop the facility, taking into account the current global crisis and credit situation that's going on right now, and also their option to acquire emissions reduction credits for non-attainment criteria air pollutants such NOCs, SOCs, PMs, and VOCs in light of the Southern California Air Quality Management District's permit moratorium. In addition, the Bureau requested authority from the board to negotiate with the four shortlisted, listed commercial proposals and the remaining emerging proposal to obtain their best and final offer. Following the responses from the vendors, the outcome of the, the outcome from the negotiations, the evaluation panel will finalize their evaluation and submit recommendations to the Board of Public Works with the recommendations to proceed. With that concludes our oral presentation.
Okay. Are there any questions yet? Or should we take public comment? Okay, let's take public comment then. We have two requests for speakers. First, Frank Campbell.
Good afternoon. I'm Frank Campbell. I'm president of Interstate Waste Technologies. In 2005, the city's consultant, URS, ranked our conversion technology first in the procurement process for the city. On June 1st, HDR, the city's current consultant disqualified us from the procurement. HDR cited six reasons for our disqualification. All are factually inaccurate and have been so identified in the handout I provided a little bit, a few minutes ago. No consultant in the solid waste industry agrees with HDR's findings. Indeed, HDR themselves don't agree with their own findings. From 1998 until 2005, HDR was a member of IWT's project team, serving as design engineer and constructor on seven conversion technology projects. Most notable was HDR's inclusion as our design engineer and partner in both the city and the county's conversion technology projects. We have no idea how HDR could stand behind our technology and proposals to seven U.S. governmental agencies, including L.A. City and L.A. County, and now find it not acceptable. Our technology is a non-combustion, non-incineration technology, achieves 100% diversion from landfills, has zero landfill waste, lowest air emissions of any thermal technology, no processed water discharges, generates the highest amount of renewable energy with ton of waste processed, and reduces greenhouse gas emissions significantly. The stimulus act and higher rates pay for renewable energy since our 2007 proposal together will reduce our original tipping fee by about $35 per ton. HDR's inaccurate findings will prevent the city from further consideration of our environmentally and economic proposal. It's unfair to the city, its citizens, and IWT. We request the city cause, IWT, cause HDR to correct this inaccurate report and include IWT in its final round of negotiation for the alternative energy project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Appreciate it. We'll have a comment from the staff.
Should I leave now?
Yeah.
No, you don't have to leave.
Yeah.
I'm finished talking.
Jim Stewart.
Councilman Smith, and fellow city council members. My name is Jim Stewart, and I am chairman of the Bioenergy Producers Association, an association of companies including bio-based technology providers, waste disposal companies, investor-owned utilities, and engineering and consulting firms, whose mission is to advance the development and commercialization of sustainable, environmentally preferable technologies that produce power, fuels, and chemicals from agricultural forestry and urban wastes, biomass wastes. As a bit of background, the Department of Energy's 2007 Gasification World Database identified 144 major gasification plants employing 427 gasifiers that were providing 56,000 megawatts of thermal energy from syngas. Zeus Energy Consultants follows more than 300 gasification facilities that are operating throughout the world, and the International Energy Agency is tracking more than 40 conversion technology projects that are now in development, construction, and operation in North America. We are the sponsors of AB 222, legislation that has now passed the state assembly in a bipartisan 54 to 13 vote, which would help establish a level playing field for the development of conversion technologies throughout California and would have significant benefit to the city of Los Angeles. A great deal of misinformation about our legislation is reaching legislators in the public, and in response to this, our association has commissioned the University of California Riverside to conduct a study of emissions data from more than 25 gasification and/or pyrolysis plants that are operating in five different countries, including the United States. That study indicates that these facilities could meet all standards of environmental performance established in California. In a cursory study, they identified more than, almost 100 plants around the world that are disposing of municipal solid waste in the production of energy, chemicals, and other products. Unfortunately, immediately following the release of the Bureau's report, the opponents began aggressively circulating the language that was used in the study in an effort to oppose our legislation. Environmental justice groups, by endorsing this study as a "rejection of conversion technologies" by the city, find themselves in the curious position of endorsing the waste combustion technologies selected by the report, an alternative which they have been voraciously opposing for the past 10 years. The truth is that with modern 21st century emissions control technologies, all of these technologies, both gasification and waste combustion, can operate to the highest standards of air and water quality in the state. Understanding that framing language is important, we're very appreciative that the Bureau of Sanitation, at the direction of the Board of Public Works, is making revisions in the report. We hope that the committee would, could also add a cover letter to the revised report that helps to clarify the misinformation currently being disseminated and reaffirms its commitment to conversion technologies as an important element in addressing the overwhelming waste disposal challenges faced by the city. The letter could simply reinforce the city's position and discuss next steps, including Renew L.A.'s vision for up to six additional commercial projects. It's important to note that the city would continue to evaluate technologies going forward since a great deal of progress has been made since the time the city visited the reference facilities last year. One example is that Plasko Energy and the, and the, the findings with regard to Plasko Energy were made at the time the plant was in startup a year ago, and much progress has been made, seven-day operations since that time. We look forward to the revised report and appreciate the committee's consideration of a cover letter that would help set the record straight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. And just, I think for the record, first of all, that we've been joined by Mr. Cardenas on the committee. I think for us to take a position and state upfront before this committee actually acts upon an approval that comes back from Board of Public Works a few months from now would kind of be inappropriate. But the Renew L.A. proposal, which the council's already adopted, essentially says that same thing. And so I'd be very careful about this committee taking an action on something we're not even having back before us yet, as kind of any kind of pre-statement, because that'd be, I think legally we'd be in jeopardy of doing that. But I think the statement that Renew Plan made years ago that the council's adopted kind of does that anyway. So I appreciate your comments. Lisa Gritsner. Hi there.
How are you? Hi. I am here today representing Plasko Energy Group, and we are very thankful that the Board of Public Works was willing to work with us. Alistair McLean from Plasko was here last week and did express some concerns in the report about some of the information. We are very thankful to the staff of the Bureau of Sanitation. Alex Halu and Miguel Zermeino have been working with the Plasko folks to try to resolve some of the concerns that were expressed about the language. And I think we're almost there. But what I would like to ask is that the current version of the report, which I believe was submitted yesterday to the clerk of the Board of Public Works, states in the second paragraph, "During the site visit in July 2008, certain parts of the system could not be started despite several attempts by the operators. Prior to the city's site visit, the vendor had not demonstrated to process more than 1,000 tons in a 12-month period. Subsequently, after the site visit, the vendor stated to have processed 1,750 tons between January 2008 and February 2009." What we would like to request is that the language be changed or modified from the statement stated, the vendor stated, to the vendor supplied data to the city demonstrating that they had processed 1,750 tons between January 2008 and February 2009. The reason being is that, as I think you heard from Jim and others, these are emerging technologies, and there are a lot of folks out there who state things or who claim certain things. And we feel very strongly that, you know, we're an emerging technology, and we're trying very hard to be throughout California. And we've already seen the words from this report be thrown back at Fiona Ma and others, Senator Adams as well, or Assemblymember Adams as well, in their efforts on AB 222. So we're just very careful about the language that, that gets thrown about there. So with that change, we are very happy. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Can we have the staff come back now? Alex, okay, Alex and Miguel. I'll ask you to make comment on the request and the comments made by Frank and others. I would hope that this report is, is reflective as we can of the facts. I think what we just heard from Ms. Gritsner was factual, that the information was presented to us. It doesn't say that we agreed with it or anything. But I think it's important for us that if the city of L.A. does finally approve a technology and go forward, that all these bidders have to know that it is the intention of the city of L.A. to proceed on further projects in the future. We don't want to disadvantage any of them, nor do we want to give fodder to those who are fighting these technologies around the country. And in any language that we use in our report, that in any way could be used against them because they did a good effort to at least try and get our business. And, and I think we should recognize that fact and be very thankful that they did that. Just the fact that they didn't win is unfortunate, but that's the process. I mean, there's always a winner and a loser. But that we shouldn't do anything to hurt them in their field, or should we do anything to hurt the future of conversion technologies in America as this fight will continue across the country. So I hope you'll take the language Ms. Gritsner presented, and it sounded correct to me just hearing it. But I hope you do something with that. So with that, responses from you.
Absolutely, Councilman. Alex Halu for the Bureau of Sanitation. Our intention was never really to hurt anybody. It's, we wanted to be very precise and very consistent, and we'll provide a technical report back to our Board of Public Works, so a decision could be made based on that. I'd like to clarify a few things that were said. On the study by URS, URS did a study back in 2005 for the city of Los Angeles. What this study really stated is that alternative technology are a viable option for the disposal of the source separated municipal solid waste. We enjoy one of the highest diversion rates in the country. We have 65%. So our goal is not really to take just trash with recyclables and dispose of it. It's really to recycle more and whatever left, that amount that could not be sent to a landfill, that amount to be processed into energy, clean fuel. And so the URS study really, we have to look at it in its context. The numbers were 2005. It evaluated the technology based on their merits, and the technology did not really say each city has to select this one. All the, all the study did was, these are the technologies that are available to the city. And also, I would like to mention a second thing about HDR. HDR is a, is a consulting company that does a lot of studies. For the city of Los Angeles, they were specifically instructed to deal with the municipal solid waste only, what's in the black bin. So their study maybe for other cities might have different material in it where this technology, IWT, or other technology might be suitable. But for the city-specific municipal solid waste, their recommendations, as well as our site visits and our discussions with the operators, who were very willing and sharing a lot of good information with us on the site visit, helped us cement our decision about items that Miguel mentioned, which is the, the gas that's coming up and how that was supplemented, and also how the facility was operational. On the report being misused by other people, they're absolutely correct. Some people are taking elements of this report, and they were not really reading it to what it is. The city is not rendering judgment on these technologies. We feel a lot of these technologies has potential. It depends on what type of waste you are dealing with, or what type of feedstock. And so I'd like to clarify, the city did not choose thermal technology only. The, the technology that were shortlisted, it includes one anaerobic digestion, and that's purely anaerobic digestion by CART. The second one, there were two advanced thermal recycling. And these two plants are operational in Europe, and they have acceptance of the Greenpeace as well as other environmental groups, because they do reduce greenhouse gas. They do generate electricity that's used by the municipalities as well as the districts that's around the facility. And the third, the third, actually, the other, the fourth technology that made this list is Ubassa, and that has a pre-processing upfront, include gasification system as well as anaerobic digestion. So the city was, the city team, which includes Bureau of Sanitation staff, DWP, as well, we have some technical experts from outside the city who are Nobel Prize winners. We have also Dr. Hoffben from Caltech, and we have some really worded-down people sitting on this panel. They're looking at these things and really evaluating it in light of what is it for the city. So when we made this judgment, we really were specifically looking how this impacted the city waste only. We're not looking at other waste. And people are going to be misrepresenting this report, and we have an intention of submitting a letter to Assemblywoman Ma to just clarify this item, because that's very important to us. They've taken this report out of context. As for Plasko, I mean, we reported what we saw when we were visiting the facility. I know they tried, and we know it's an emerging technology. We know, we saw the waste, and we saw the effort the operators were trying to do. And so we wanted to bring back the technology to the city that could work with the solid waste that the city is dealing with. I would have to take a look back at that, because I know we got the information about the 1,750, and that's how we listed it in our report, as was given to us by the vendor. So we need to go back to the Board of Public Works for that change.
Okay. Anything further? Okay. Questions for the committee? Birthday girl?
She's happy.
Mr. Cardenas.
When it comes to these technologies, what, what kind of weighting or what kind of consideration was given to the potential for citing these? Because one of the biggest problems that we have in this city, one of the biggest problems we have in this country where you have a democracy, is that 1, 2, 3, 500, 5,000 people start screaming and yelling, then all of a sudden, we can't cite the project. Forget about the EIRs, forget about all the technical hurdles, sometimes just the issue of the volume of people making noise about it. of the volume of people making noise about it in a certain neighborhood tends to prevail when it comes to not citing these projects.
At this part of the RFP, Councilman, we only looked at the elements that was the RFP to be evaluated on, which is diversion from landfill, and there's environmental, there's another study that's being conducted on the citing element, and we're working with planning on that. But this was, right now, we're just evaluating the technology itself, whether this technology can process the city municipal solid waste. The element that comes in about placing a site in environmental-sensitive areas, that is actually being handled on a separate track.
So issues of footprint size, smells, height, what kinds of fuels may have to be brought onto the site, or other elements, that's all being done on a separate?
Not entirely. The environmental impact from these technologies is being addressed under this RFP. However, the location where these facilities could be located in the city is on another track. But for example, the emissions from these facilities, as well as the environmental, and one of the items that was mentioned before is, we have, right now, there is a moratorium from AQMD about any credits for these facilities. And that's something we need to go back to the proposers, because some of them might have purchased those credits, or they have these credits available, so they can be able to. Right now, we cannot really construct any of these facilities unless they can secure the credits. So we need to go back to get clarification. This RFP was sent in 2007. Two things have happened since. One, we had the financial meltdown, and two, AQMD priority reserve. And so we felt we need to go right now, as evaluation team, and ask for those two clarification from the remaining shortlisted proposers.
What financial meltdown? You mentioned one.
Didn't hear about it.
Which one are you referring to?
Well, I know there is the, some of the vendors had like certain banking. They had certain banks and certain setups, and those are no longer existing.
You're not talking about our city financial meltdown?
No.
State financial. You're talking about private industry meltdown when it comes to access to capital?
I'm talking about the banking, financial meltdown.
See, now you know why I wanted to cut. Some of us kind of took it a little personal, thought you were talking about us.
Yeah, we've been getting that all day.
A little edgy. A little edgy. So on this particular, so far in this particular process, this aspect, have you, when it comes to the shortlist as it's described here, is there any relevance to footprint size? I mean, one particular scale model might need 17 acres, which is a lot harder to get a hold of in this area than if the footprint is three to five acres that would have you now. You have a lot more potential for different sites that actually could handle that size of facility. Was that taken into account at all, or that was just information that didn't play relevance in the shortlist?
Actually, the RFP has two parts of them. For one part is for commercial facility, which is able to do 200 to 1,000 tons a day. So that needs a big footprint. The other part of the RFP calls for an emerging technology, which is less than 200 tons a day, and that could be from two to maybe four acres, five acres. So we have the two options in our RFP. There are several sites that are being evaluated, and some offered by council members, that can accommodate both sites, I mean, commercial as well as emerging.
I didn't offer a site, did I?
No, Macario wants that.
I just want to make sure when you said council member is offering sites, I was just curious. Well, no, 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 no. See, that's one of the things, I have plenty of sites when it comes to waste already in my area. So I was just wondering if...
Another one won't matter, will it?
Oh, yes, it will.
You've already got, what, 50 or?
More than anybody. So it just, by default, there seems to be two categories of footprint size?
That's correct.
Okay. Any of them come to mind on the shortlist? What's the largest footprint that seems to come to mind on the shortlist?
I believe the largest one would require about 15 acres, and the smallest one would require about a couple acres.
Okay, thank you.
And just, yeah, and on your question, I think what they really did is more of a programmatic overview rather than a site-specific initially. And we'll get into those environmental issues when we do the sites with specific, obviously. Mr. Parks.
I was just going to say that they priced me right out just from the land mass.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Chairman, the reason why I brought that up, and I was describing the volume of the community of the noise or what have you that might protest over any site, whether it's two acres or 15 acres or what have you, I wasn't speaking so much to the EIR type of reality. I was just speaking to how real is it for us to be able to even find sites of a magnitude above five acres? Because once you go above five acres, and like Councilmember Parks said, you know, certain communities, whether they even want it, it would, they just don't have the capacity to take on that kind of footprint.
And I also like to mention, I mean, some of the facilities that we've seen in Japan, in Europe, is really designed in very aesthetic, beautiful way that fits into the community, they're not the traditional, you know, dumping ground that people look into it. They're really very beautiful, and I have to give credit to all the proposers we got, all the 13 of them, even the ones that not passed the me be, we be, and the good faith effort. They provided really beautiful architect that could blend into the area they're going to be placed in. I mean, any area would be glad to put something similar in that area that people could coming in, students could tour, be educated, what happened, the trash comes in, how it's recycled, how the energy is generated. So really, these are not the old traditional ones that people have been accustomed to.
And also, a number of them had parks attached to them, or community facilities, pools, senior centers, et cetera. So there were real community benefits attached to those properties and stuff.
On the ones that were seen on the site visits?
Yeah.
Okay. But that begs this question. Of the shortlist, do all of them meet a standard of proposing a negative air pressure facility or better?
All of them will have to meet what's called the best available control technology for an emission, and all of them had proposed something where they controlled the negative pressure as well to operate the facility. And based on already our tool, you can hardly, you know, see the smell from, you know, or you can notice it. It's very controlled. Lot of times, they pull the air from the, you know, from the tipping floor, they put it into their gasification system, or into their scrubbing system, it depends how they end up handling it. But a lot of these technologies are state-of-the-art, they're not the traditional 1970s or 1960 technology with a lot of odors and a lot of smell. So they're very well-controlled, very well-ventilated. And I have to tell you from my experience on the tour, seeing the operation in Spain, I mean, the employees were even working on the dirty murphing, they have a lot of machines pulling up the material. The employees were happy, were smiling, you know, as, you know, because they really are sitting in nice ventilated area and have glass around them, and you can see they're really happy the way they're working. And the turnover of the staff was very minimal at these facilities, because it's a very positive, you know, environment.
So you interpreted that, that they were smiling because that's just their daily habit, or because the Americanos were there?
I think you could see when somebody is genuinely happy and satisfied with their job, but, you know, maybe they saw us, they're even more happier.
They might have stopped off at a medical marijuana spot on the way to work. We don't know. They were happy. Okay, anything further from staff? Next steps are, you're going to be going for financial information now, obviously that needs to be recalculated.
Absolutely.
Evidence, further evidence of permit...
How to be doing...
Permitability. Permitability. And update on tipping fee information. So that's the next steps, and then you'll report back to us in about 90 days? Is that correct?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. All right, with that, we will...
Clarification?
Yeah, sure.
The, one of the representatives or lobbyists from one of the companies that got a pass, I'm looking at the list, she appears to be speaking to some language in the report regarding their technology, and they received a passing grade. Can you clarify for us, you mentioned that you were going to put some language together for Speaker Bass or somebody like that, they may have been misinterpreting the language in your report?
I don't know if the Assemblywoman, actually, Ma, was the one who mis...
Oh, Ma.
Yeah, certain individuals have been taking this report and misrepresenting what the city has done. And we, actually, we drafted a response that we'll be sending to clarify what was the intention of the city, because they're saying the city have chosen thermal technologies, the incineration, the city is doing this, which is totally not true. And also, they're saying, well, the city had made judgment on this technology.
Now, you heard the young lady speak a few minutes ago. Does there seem to be a consistency between what she said and what you're trying to clarify to the legislators? Or that's not the point today, and you guys are going to talk to her later to talk about her specific concern?
Well, there's two things. Her concern is different. What we want to do is to clarify to Assemblywoman Ma that, one, what was the city intention from this RFP, which is really going after specific waste? Because we do recycle, we're going to continue the recycling, we're going to expand the recycling. We have an excellent recycling program. So it's a lot of misrepresentation what the Assemblywoman has, have been fed by different groups. Our goal was to clarify what was, what has the city team has done so far, and what are the results of our study. But the one from Plasko, I believe, they objected to a statement saying that after the site visit, the vendor stated to have processed 1,750, and she would like to be changed. After the site visit, the vendor supplied data to the city to have processed 1,750.
So you'll clarify that with her later?
Yeah.
Which is more accurate.
Well, they supplied the data. The thing is, when we received the data, we could not confirm it whether it was completely MSW, or it was MSW mixed with plastics.
So should you get that kind of clarification, then you could actually render your answer on her statement?
Yes.
On that point?
But again, I mean, the technology, what we saw, Councilman, has a lot of potential. The Plasko, maybe it's not...
Well, they got a passing...
No, actually, it didn't pass this time.
No?
No.
What company is it?
Plasko. It's on page seven of the board report.
Okay. So I'm looking at a summary list on page four.
No, he's looking at four. On, actually, on page four, there is the 13 companies who proposed to the city, and what they passed, meaning that they passed a good faith effort.
Okay, that was a subset of the overall grade.
Yeah, there was two requirements, they have to pass the city first, before we evaluate them. So they passed a good faith effort.
Okay. All right, so for example, clarifying that to the legislature, or anybody who comes, it comes to our attention that they may be misinterpreting our report. For example, there are very few municipalities that are actually allowing styrofoam, which is a petroleum-based product, to go into the blue bin. We do encourage people to put that in the blue bin, because we are recycling styrofoam in this city, correct?
Absolutely.
Yet, prior to doing that, like most cities, styrofoam would be, was supposed to go in the black bin, correct?
That's correct.
So therefore, that's one example of it's not being like-for-like, and that needs to be clarified, that we're looking specifically at our waste stream and what goes into our black bin, correct?
Absolutely correct.
Or distinction for the legislature, I think, too, because I've been up there for five years on these issues, so.
They're not too smart up there.
When they graduate, they become council members, they get smart, right?
That's the junior league.
I want to thank the staff, first of all, particularly Enrique and Alex Halu. They've been working on this for years, and the trip that we put together to go visit these facilities, it was, you know, it was a long process, and a lot of work yet remains. I just want to thank you for all you've done, particularly Miguel, who's lived this for five years, it was his assigned project, and he's not done. He's getting close to the finish line, but he ain't there yet, so. But I just want to thank you all the work. This has been extraordinary, five-year-long project, and to get us to this point is really extraordinary. So thank you for that very much, and we'll see you back in 90 days.
Thank you.
I'm just wondering if he's Spanish, because he's smiling.
Yeah, he's happy. Thank you very much. And item number three is an executive session item, so I have to ask all members of the public to please leave, and only...
Yes, I would just like to read that the city may adjourn into closed session for a status report on the cases entitled Browning Ferris Industries of California, Inc. versus City of Los Angeles, Los Angeles Superior Court, case number BS 118796, and County of Los Angeles versus City of Los Angeles, Los Angeles Superior Court, case number BS 118788, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9A.
Okay, thank you. Get the last lobbyist out of here. There they go. They do stand out in the crowd. Okay, this is all city staff? All right, thank you very much. All right, item number three?
Yeah, it looks like we are.